Call the meeting to order for the Village of Round Lake Beach. Board meeting from Monday, September 21st, 2020. Please call the roll.
Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Nichols?
Here.
Trustee Stout?
Here.
Trustee Valdez?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Let the record show a quorum is present. Would you all please rise and drumming a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any questions, additions, deletions to the agenda? If not, we have a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
I think I heard the motion from trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Sil- Valdez. We have a motion to second. Any questions, corrections on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved as written. We have our council meeting minutes from August 17th, 2020. Any corrections, clarifications on those? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Most by trustee Stout, second by trustee Husk. We have a motion to second. Any corrections or clarifications, any questions? Again, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes are approved. We have our special council meeting minutes from August 24th, 2020. Any corrections or clarifications on those? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Most by trustee Nichols.
Second.
Trustee Stout, second. Once again, any corrections, clarification of those minutes? If not, is all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those are also approved. We have approval of our expenditures. We have $967,000. Let's see, $4.30 for this month. Let me see what some of the larger items are here in the warrant list. We have our Blue Cross Blue Shield health insurance, almost $132,000. The Joint Action Water Agency for our Lake Michigan water, a little over $128,000. Chicago Lempavlin for some of the capital improvements, a little over $122,000. Those are some of the larger items. There's also lots of others that the staff have all reviewed. The trustees have had an opportunity to review. And if the trustees have any questions on the bills? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Most by trustee Husk?
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland. We have a motion to second. Any questions on the bills? Please call the roll.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
That's approved. We have no ratifications this evening. So move on to our standing committee reports. Any of the trustees having reports tonight? It's been kind of a slow summer here with the COVID out there. Under mayor's report, all I have is I have resigned as of September 30th. This is my last official board meeting with the Village of Round Lake Beach. I do have some other outside meetings that I will be attending until that point from other organizations that are part and parcel of the mayor's responsibilities. I do appreciate the villages' opportunity here for me for the last 25 years. It's been an honor and a privilege serving the residents of Round Lake Beach. I think anyone that lives here has seen some tremendous improvements. I've had a great team here to work with, both the elected officials as well as the staff, and they've done some amazing things, and I appreciate that very much. And I'm sure the village will continue moving forward. Is there a clerk's report?
No, there's not.
Okay, we'll move on to our items of business then. Item A, as a resolution approving the modification of the intergovernmental agreement relative to the original 911 consolidation to extend its term. The process of moving forward is slower than expected with the COVID. Again, a lot of the meetings have had to be canceled or put on Zoom. The county is working with a lot of the communities in Lake County to consolidate the 911 services, hopefully improve the service to our residents as well as perhaps reduce the costs, but improving the service is the number one objective there. This is going to allow it to continue on for one additional year, and that's all this one does. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Most by trustee Valdez, second by trustee Davis. We have a motion to second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
That's also approved. Item B, as a resolution approving fixed price electric supplies agreement. We went out for some quotes for electric service for the village-owned properties. We're approving a three-year contract. It's going to be $4.772 per kilowatt hour, lower than our last one, so that's great to see. They were saying that prices are starting to inch up, so I'm glad we're locking it in right now, hopefully saving their residents money. I think about $13,000 just in this one contract we'll be able to save. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Most by trustee Cleveland?
Second.
Second by trustee Husk. We have a motion to second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
That's also approved. Item C, as a resolution authorizing the purchase of certain information technology equipment from Impact Networking LLC. As you all know, electronics and certain equipment doesn't update after a while. They stop supporting it. You can't get updates, especially when you're dealing with items that stop outside intruders from entering our system. So going to be replacing some of the outdated equipment to keep our village information safe from outside internet attacks. We don't want to compromise any of your information or any of the other information that might be in our systems. Something we have to do every five years or so with this type of equipment. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve? Most by trustee Stout?
Second.
Second by trustee Nichols. We have a motion to second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
That's also approved. Item D, as a resolution authorizing the purchase of certain technology equipment. Oh, just read that one. An ordinance approving the economic incentive agreement with Black Lung Brewing Company. As we've done with some other small businesses trying to come to town, to kind of give them a helping hand when they begin, we're going to be entering an incentive agreement with Black Lung Brewing Company. Has a maximum of five years and $15,000 in standard and a bonus of up to $15,000 if they exceed their goal as far as their sales and so forth in their store, in their brewery. They're going to be over by the Love and Oven Cakery over off 83 in Millstone, so we're all looking forward to them hopefully opening in January or February of this year. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Most by trustee Stout?
Second.
Second by trustee Davis. We have a motion to second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
That's also approved. Item F, a resolution authorizing an improvement award of contract, the GNL Contracts Incorporated. We had more loads of debris removed from our public works than we expected, so there's going to be additional cost. We have to have, we have stuff that we pick up throughout the community over the course of the year that we had to have hauled away. We got rid of some extra stuff this year, but we'll have to take care of next year. So it'll balance out cost-wise, we're just prepaying this amount upfront. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Most by trustee Husk, second by trustee Valdez. We have a motion to second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
That's also approved. And earlier when I started reading item D, it was supposed to be read. So item D, as a resolution authorizing the purchase of certain technology equipment from WatchGuard. We've been reviewing the body worn cameras for quite some time now since they came out. The state has put some pretty honest requirements on using those. At this point, the village is in a position to start moving forward with the village with the body worn cameras. Started out with our people that are on the front lines out in the street first of all. Data compression technology has helped tremendously to make this available and able to be done before the storage capacity you had to have was so large. It was nearly impossible unless you had an outside service. We've also replaced our servers, so we all have more capacity than we had before, and hopefully this will start, hopefully early next year, we'll begin with the first ones. And well, each year then probably in May, we'll bring in additional cameras on, but everyone on the street will have them with the first rollout. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Most by trustee Nichols, second by trustee Valdez. We have a motion to second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
That's also approved. Item G, as a resolution authorizing an improvement award of contract to Joseph D. Foreman and Company. We're going to be purchasing two valves to be installed in our water system to allow us to shut off less customers if we need to make repairs for our system. Sometimes we had a water main break, and the way the valves were installed 20 years ago, 30 years ago, they were not, there weren't enough valves. So this way, we'll be able to shut off a smaller group of houses and not have to affect so many residents all at one time. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve? Most by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Husk. We have a motion to second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
That's also approved. Item H, as a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement with the Lake County Land Bank Authority for acquisition of properties through abandonment proceedings. Round Lake Beach for some time now has been trying to pick up abandoned property or properties that have been left in disrepair where the homeowners walked away from it or the mortgage companies decided not to do anything with it. In some cases, we had to raise the houses completely, demolish them. In other cases, we were able to hire an outside company or work with the Affordable Housing Corp. to come in and remodel the house and put it back for sale. They were usually very affordable homes when they would do that. Now we're working with the county and Lake County Municipal League to create a county land bank that will do something very similar. There will be some instances where Round Lake Beach will still do our own, only because it might have some benefit to the village in order to do it ourselves. But it'd be much easier to have the land bank as a whole do it. It'll remove some of the extra work from the staff, also their fees for attorneys and so forth will be reduced because they'll be doing a mass quantity instead of doing one at a time. So we're looking forward to working with them. And there's also some smaller communities besides Round Lake Beach that'll definitely benefit from us being part of this also. Any questions by the board? Is there a motion to approve? Most by trustee Davis?
Second.
Second by trustee Stout. We have a motion to second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout? Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
That's also approved. Item I, is approval of compensation packets for the chief of police. Chief Rivera is up for his annual raise right now. He's going to be receiving, let's see, as of September 21st, his salary will go to, total compensation will be $158,887, which includes a salary of $133,533 and health insurance of $28,304. This is posted on our website back in September 14th according to what the state laws. Any questions by the board? The chief's done an outstanding job for us, and we're very happy with his performance and the performance of the entire team over there. If there's no questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Most by trustee Husk?
Second.
Second by trustee Cleveland. We have a motion to second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Okay, that's also approved. And item J, appointment of acting mayor. Since I've tendered my resignation effective September 30th, the trustees must vote to elect someone amongst themselves to be mayor until the term expires in April of 2021. There's an election, I think, April 6th of 2021. And at this point, I will turn it over to the trustees if anyone wants to make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
What's the motion for?
I'll make a motion for trustee Nichols to become the acting mayor for the remainder of the term.
Trustee Cleveland?
Second to motion.
Second by trustee Husk. We have a motion to second. Any questions by the board? Please call the roll.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Nichols? Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Valdez?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
That's approved. Congratulations, trustee Nichols. And while I didn't have time to go out and get you an actual, I think I found Abraham Lincoln's. Go ahead and use that one, friend. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. At this time, if I could, I'd like to go on to item K, the resolution for Mayor Hill for his distinguished service in time. Clerk?
Resolution honoring Mayor Richard H. Hill for 25 years of distinguished service as trustee and mayor of the Village of Round Lake Beach, Illinois, from May 1995 to September 2020. Whereas, Richard H. Hill has served the Village of Round Lake Beach with distinguished and outstanding service as first village trustee from 1995 to 2001, and then as mayor from 2001 to 2020. Whereas, his length of service to the town includes many worthwhile and lasting accomplishments, including dredge the channels that give life to Round Lake, only time ever done, improved and expanded the lakefront park so residents can enjoy the park with their families and made it handicap accessible. Former president and current treasurer on the Lake County Municipal League, one of the vice presidents of the Illinois Municipal League, chairman of Jawa during two big membership expansions, cultural and civic center constructed, Metro Park parking lot addition, Rollins Road and Route 83 underpass, big project, roads rebuilt and water mains replaced throughout the village. There's still more to be done. ComEd improved service rate, much fewer outages, keeping Walmart in Round Lake Beach when they relocated, and the opening of Myers in its place. Whereas, Mayor Richard H. Hill's outstanding service to the Village of Round Lake Beach reflects well upon himself and the village that he led for so many years. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Richard H. Hill is hereby honored for outstanding and dedicated service to the citizens of the Village of Round Lake Beach, Lake County, Illinois, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mayor Richard H. Hill in a public ceremony, that a copy of the resolution become a permanent record of the Village of Round Lake Beach.
Mayor Hill, on behalf of the trustees, your clerk, and the staff of Round Lake Beach? Thank you, everyone. It's very nice. Thank you. Well, as I said, it's been an honor to serve the residents of Round Lake Beach, and I truly mean that. It's been a very exciting time in my life. I'm going to be missing it terribly when this is all over. You're going to have to tonight, knowing that this is the last meeting. I'm already starting to feel it a little bit. But I know the village is in good hands, and they will continue to do great work here and continue to improve the neighborhoods and the whole community. And I'm so proud of everyone and what you guys have done and what you guys will continue to do. I'm not sure, do they have to actually vote on this? They probably do, huh? I guess we'll ask for a motion to approve, though.
So moved. So moved.
Most by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Valdez. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you, everyone. Okay.
Mayor Hill, if you don't mind, a couple words. Mayor Hill, honorable trustees, staff, residents, and friends and family, it is my high honor to stand here in the shadows of a man who has dedicated a quarter century of selfless service to our great community of Round Lake Beach. While I could talk for hours on the individual contributions of Mayor Hill has helped make this such a great place to live and work, one thing that stands out above all the rest, less tangible than the items mentioned in our proclamation tonight, is the sense of community he helped usher in. Mayor Hill has developed a sense of home for everyone, a place to raise our families in peace and tranquility. He is pushed to make Round Lake Beach a comfortable, diverse, and inclusive place to live. He has softened the governing approach through community outreach by the police and all the village departments. Residents are met with staff with a smile and a willingness to help when they enter our village hall. These soft touches are often taken for granted, but send a message to the public that we respect you, we understand you, and we are here to help you. Mayor Hill has done this while strongly promoting economic development to help shoulder the burden to our taxpayers, which has helped kept Round Lake Beach's village taxes one of the lowest in the entire county. Our great village has a long-term, balanced budget, strong reserves, and a solid capital plan that ensures we account for maintenance to avoid unnecessary emergencies. Mayor Hill, you have come and done so much of the hard work to build a solid foundation that we can build our house on. As we navigate into the future, that solid and firm base must be maintained to allow us the ability to focus on projects, to enhance that vision that you have created and worked so hard for. As mayor, with this trusted board's approval, I hope to nurture all those seeds that you've planted, grow our community outreach, foster in new and diverse economic development, encourage stronger relationships with our community members, enhance the safety and security for all of our residents, and solidify a true partnership between the people and their government. I believe I speak for all of the trustees when I say thanks are not enough to express our appreciation for the work you have done and will continue to do, no doubt. Rich, I really enjoyed your friendship, your trust, and your mentorship. I wish you much enjoyment in your retirement, and I hope I can call on you when I need advice, someone who will just listen, and a friend to talk to. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to say it's been a pleasure working with you all these years. All the things you contribute to the Round Lake Beach area, as Scott has mentioned, is well-recognized, and there were so many changes that have been made that were the better and the good for the community. I'm really going to miss working with you. We've been together for over 20 years, and we'll just have to just keep moving, and that's all I'm going to say because I'll start to cry.
If I may, Rich, you are the only reason I agreed to join the board, seeing what you've done, and being such a longtime resident. I've lived out here since 1957. I have seen such growth and everything that you've put into it, and I feel honored to have worked with you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say that I'm truly honored as well, and you most certainly have made Round Lake Beach a place to call home for my family. I'm going to try not to cry. And I think I speak for all of us that we're going to miss your smiling face regardless of the stress that's put upon you and all the work that you do. You always have a gleaming smile, and it's most certainly going to be missed, so I wish you all the best.
Rich, I want to say thank you. It's been a great privilege to work with you as clerk and then as a trustee, and having you as a friend has been wonderful. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Rich, I'll echo the sentiments I put out there on Facebook. You will be missed. Thank you for the mentoring, the guidance, and the leadership, and thank you for allowing me to be a part of your board.
Thank you. Well, as I said, it's a team effort here. I might be the mayor, but you guys make it all happen. You guys are the ones that vote on things. You're the ones that discuss so long sometimes on other Monday nights. Maybe a lot of the people in the audience don't understand, we have committee meetings before we actually have this board meeting. So while we go through the agenda fairly quickly at the meeting here, we spend quite a bit of time discussing and formulating the final product before it gets to this point, so it can be easily passed and agreed upon, so that the team does great here and they all work together so well. And so great ideas come out of those discussions. You know, it might start out with, oh, let's do it this way, but by the end, completely different way to do things because somebody's came up with an idea, and everyone listened. That's the important part, everyone listens. So thank you again, everyone, for all the nice statements you've made, and I will definitely miss my role here, but I have, what, nine more days?
We have your number.
Well, thank you, everyone. Okay, move on then. Let's see, we have item nine, four, four, Roman numerals. It's open to public participation. Anyone who has a question or comment for the board, the microphone's up here. You can step up there. There's a limited three minutes per person at the microphone at the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and ask your question or state your comment.
All right. My name is Fabiola Rosales. I'm a resident of 24587 West Luther Avenue, Round Lake. My question to you, Mayor Hill, is why has there been no comments or statement on the incident of my brother, Abel Rosales Jr.?
Thank you for your comment. Because there's an active investigation going on, I'm unable to comment on it. Once the investigation's done, I might be able to comment at that point, but as you know, there's going to be a coroner's inquest coming up on the 1st of October, and they're still going through their process. I wish I could comment, but I can't.
So you can't comment on any incidents with residents if there's an investigation?
If there's an ongoing investigation, correct.
Got it. Okay, and then my other question is, will Officer Atwell and Officer Kramer from the Round Lake Beach Police Department be removed until this investigation is over? As residents of Round Lake Beach, we do not feel safe with those officers patrolling our streets. our streets. And as mayor, I know you've had a lot of accomplishments, and we hope that you remove these two officers before you leave office. Is that something that you can do?
I have never removed an officer in the past. I don't know if I have the ability to do that if it's the police commission, never even asked. I will look into it. I don't think that will happen, quite frankly. But again, I can't discuss a lot of that information because it's part of the investigation that's ongoing right now.
Okay.
I'll find out the answers to your questions.
Okay, perfect. And then how can I follow up in regards to my question?
Do we have your information at the vote hall here yet?
I'm sure you do, yeah. If not, I can leave it with Ms.
Okay, if you have one mind.
With your village clerk?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
And then my other question in regards to all of your accomplishments here with Round Lake Beach, what has been one of your highlights in regards to including the Latinx and Black community in engagement with the village hall?
Probably when we had the Mexican fiestas over at our cultural center for so many years in a row. Working with Omar and JC, putting that thing together out there, it was really, really a thrill, and it was fun to have all the excitement going on and the different cultures. We also, in the cultural center, we had the, what'd they call it? It was one of the celebrations they had, like September seventeenth. They actually had it indoor, they had all the dancers come in from Mexico, and that was so exciting. So exciting.
Okay, well, my only comment is, I hope that these last nine days in office go well for you and that you make the decision to make our community safe and remove these two officers that killed my brother, Abel Rosales, Jr. And thank you all for your time and for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or questions for the board tonight?
My name is Alma Trujillo. I am a resident of Round Lake Beach as well, twenty-nineteen Westview Lane, and I just wanted to follow up on hers, just to let you know that these officers, just same question, if they'll be removed, and maybe this question should be addressed to Scott Nichols, since he will be our new mayor, if he plans on doing anything about getting these two officers removed until the investigation is done, because until then, we don't know whether they're guilty or innocent, and they shouldn't be patrolling our streets.
I would give you the same answer. There's an active investigation going on. We can't really discuss the investigation itself or the case, and at this point, I haven't even asked my attorneys as far as if there's a process for that, if I can do that, if the chief of police does that or the police commission does that. I had no intention myself of doing that. Trustee Nichols or acting mayor Nichols will have to decide it upon himself. I'm not sure he's in a position tonight to respond to you on that or not.
Okay, thank you, and it's good to know when the election day is. So thank you for your time and wish you all the best.
Thought I saw somebody else had their hand up. Oh, yes, absolutely. We want to wait till I get the microphone. We can't quite hear you without the.
May I call you, Your Honor?
However you'd like to refer.
Thank you for your service, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And to all of you, peace. I'm a nurse. I work in Beloit in a COVID unit. My daughter's a nurse. She works in Kenosha at Frehderd Hospital. She worked the night of the troubles, and that's what I call them, the troubles. I had some friends post nasty stuff on Facebook about it. They said, ha, 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 they got what they deserved. I'm not saying this side, that side, any side. I'm saying that's wrong. One of the guys got a message back from me that said, that's sick. They posted a bunch of laughing emojis underneath it. My daughter was a nurse working in the ER in Kenosha that night. She took care of those patients. Gas does not care where you are. Gas cares where the wind is blowing. It was not a fun time. I saw her when she came home. I saw her pain. I saw what so many nurses and doctors and everyone else have gone through over and over and over again, and my heart broke. I didn't know what to do. My sister, I'm an amateur vexiologist. That means I like flags. I bought a flag. Bought this, not this one. This is number seven, I think, I'm not certain. They've got a hundred signatures on each of them. One's going to the hospital my daughter worked at to thank the doctors and nurses, and it's signed by physicians, respiratory therapists, physical therapists, citizens, everybody that I can get to sign it. And then I did another one. And then Lisa did one. And then Kevin did one. And now there's one in Colorado, and there's one in Chicago. And I was driving, riding my bike through town, and I said, why not stop and ask the mayor to sign? So I swung by. You don't have a bike rack. Please put a bike rack out front for people that ride bikes.
Might have one in the back. But you're right, there should be.
I'm not from around here, but I'm a neighbor of Kenosha, and you guys are neighbors of Kenosha.
Yes.
And one of the flags is going to the mayor of Kenosha, and it's going to be a blank flag other than signatures of communities and residents and people who live around Kenosha, to send that village, that city, that town, this town, your town, my town, our town, a message of peace. I have to be honest with you, I have rules about signing my flag before I ask anybody to sign it. No politics. No politics. No left, no right, no up, no down. No politics. No special interests. One message. If you want to advertise for McDonald's, if you want to advertise for Walmart and help them out, sorry, that's not my thing. I got one message, and that's peace. And on October first, when I take these to Kenosha, I have to decide what to do with the other ones. And I kind of made my decision. I decided to take them to the Lincoln Memorial in Washington, DC on November first, because I do think that's symbolic of where we are at as a country at this time. And I want to say peace. I want to say chill out. I want to say take a deep breath, relax. We do have a means of addressing these issues, and it is called democracy, and it is voting, and we have an election coming. Our voices will be heard. Not everyone's going to agree with me. Not everyone's going to disagree with me. That's my message. Want to sign my flag?
Absolutely, yes. I think peace is one thing we can all agree on.
You guys want to sign my flag? Thank you. I'll wait till we're done. I don't want to disturb anybody. I'm an out-of-towner, but I'll carry your signature to the mayor of Kenosha, and I'm going to stop in Graves Lake and ask them, and I'm going to stop in Antioch and ask